First Ward Alderman Scott Williams, Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Fourth Ward Alderman Dick Potter, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Alderman at Large Sonia Berg, at the Committee of the Whole and City Council Meetings of December 8, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, I'm here. Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker. Alderman Parker.
Aye.
It's gonna be a rock, maybe. Alderman Went?
I don't know, my...
We got you, Alderman Parker.
Thank you.
And did, I'm sorry, did Alderman Went say aye as well?
He did. I did.
No, no, I think that's a clerk's problem here. We got it? Yep. All right, that motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. We're beginning this evening with a presentation. Kathy Wayne and Dr. Norm Moline, Board of Directors of River Action, have joined us to tell us, give us an update on their organization. Kathy, I see you. Yeah?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for inviting us. I asked to speak tonight because I wanted to primarily tell you about the collaboration with the City of Moline and the Parks Department and River Action and the things we're doing there. We're working with a grant from the Moline Foundation and some funding from the Community Works program, and it's not a lot. It's together, it's under $10,000, but we're able to do a lot, and so I thought I'd tell you what we're doing and what we hope to do. And to do that, I've asked Dr. Moline, who is headed up this effort, and he's gonna give you a progress report. I'm gonna turn my laptop to him.
Yes, hello. I appreciate the time, and again, good to be in touch with the Moline City Council. As some of you know, I've been involved with Sylvan Island since writing the first report back in 1970, which in time became the guiding document for its ultimate development as a combination nature park, fishing park, historic park, and more recently, a biking park, both for regular bikes and notably for off-road bikes. It really is a unique place, and a lot of people, I think you know, use it. A friend of mine, we were over there painting, you'll hear more about that in a minute, just a week ago on a Saturday, and in the three hours we were there, we estimated we saw 100 different units, either a single person, or a couple, or a family of five people, just in that short time, and we wish that a lot of people could have seen that. It's a wonderful, good extra thing for your city's park district, and we thank you for managing it, for having it, and particularly to single out Eric Griffith and Greg Johnson and Rod Schick of your park and Public Works Departments. They are as supportive as their time allows. Many people from the Florisiente neighborhood, including significantly in earlier years, Jesse Perez, whom I'm sure you realize sadly died a few weeks ago, and his brothers, people from Augustana, people from the F-O-R-C, the Friends of Off-Road Cycling, from River Action, from Sylvan Island Dreamers, when it was functioning, have put in tons of volunteer hours on the park for lots of tasks for decades, and they still do. But now, in 2020, some issues have come to the surface again. One bad place was, what you see on the image in front of you, was the Thomas Rogers Visitor Center. The Plexigas panels covering all of those informative exhibits had been covered by stuff which just couldn't be removed by... Please back up. On the slide? Can you reverse that? Yeah, they've been covered by different solutions by your staff, and they just couldn't get it off. So River Action decided to use some of its grant to purchase new panels, which are more resistant toward graffiti and fading, and what you see now, they are, the city installed them, and it really looks much better. If you would go over there, you would think, gee, this is, these are new panels. It really looks much crisper. But there are some other issues. The main one is graffiti. Some of it is really offensive, which seemed to increase significantly this summer. It overwhelmed the ability of your park and public work staff to control when so many other demands were on their shoulder. And so if you now click to the next one, next image, this one, these are on the two overlooks on the north side of the island from the levee. There's this one, and then the other one. We actually, we took another photo, but it didn't get here in time for you to see it. We called this to the attention of the city's staff, and since so many people go to this overlook, we didn't want to have this kind of pretty stuff there for families, and they went over. So now, if you would go over there tomorrow, at least unless somebody did bad stuff over the last couple of days, that stuff is all covered, and so that's good, and that, we hope that that can stay that way. Okay, the next slide? Now, this one is backing, for us backing up a little bit away from the graffiti for a moment. This is the signage that is in the Thomas Rogers Center, and you can see the different trails that are there. And one of the need that came up from different people who were using the island, River Action field trips and other groups that I take over there, they felt there was a need for more signage for the hiking trails on the island, the ones that officially are shown in the seven colors on this map, to guide people along the trails. So River Action sought and received a $4,500 grant from the Moline Foundation. We plan to place fish-shaped Corten Steel signs at key points on the island. It now appears that we will have 35 fish pointing in different directions on 19 posts. We hope to have them up in the spring, and that will allow people to more clearly function. Then, again, we can move on to the next one. Without any supplies of this, though, a couple of good things. The city did put in a few more trash bins, which help people pick up trash. So by and large, the island is quite clean, not that much trash, and the people we see over there comment on that point. We recommend one more trash bin along one section where the space between existing spots is a little bit too long, but other than that, that is not too much of an issue. Another good thing, before we return to graffiti, the park benches and the pic, there's what, 13 park benches and one picnic table. Well, they needed repainting, and so Paul Olson, the legendary cross-country and track coach at Augie, now retired, he and I, we painted six and a half benches last Saturday, and tomorrow, with the 50-some degree temperature, we're gonna go over and do the remaining six and a half. So that means, heading into the winter, all 13 park benches and all picnic tables will look good, and they certainly give, help the island feel a little bit more crisp and ready to go. But there are other places with lots of graffiti, and you can see one. This is along the Central Trail, so if people are walking from the bridge across to the more distant fishing point, they see this, and you can push the next slide, please. This is one of the things Paul and I painted over, and so you can see what a difference that makes, what a nice crisp feeling it has, and we did the sides on that one. Okay, the next slide? Along the east side, as you walk along the tail race toward the Mid-America Water Plant, there are a couple, well, there are many of these piers, but most of them are heading back north away from the trail, but there are two that are right next to the trail, so anybody who walks along the trail, this is what they see. And here, we're seeing a broad picture, but in some cases, if you get up close, you've got gang symbols and other kinds of words and stuff you don't want anybody to be seeing. So again, next slide, please. Paul and I took that on, and this is the way it looks instead, and so that looked good. And then, however, for the first week, there was no new stuff, and when I was over there Sunday morning, it was okay, but then, look what happened. And now, the next slide? It's all covered over again. So tomorrow, Paul and I, when we're painting benches, we're bringing over the black paint given to us from the Public Works Department, and we'll cover it over again. So it's an ongoing kind of issue. One other section, which we don't have, then we already saw the overlook up here, one other section, there's something called a loading dock trail, which is really a wonderful long little section, goes right into the old steelworks. It's several hundred yards long, but we almost never had graffiti there until the middle of this summer, and now, if you would walk down that, you have about 100 yards on either side of you that are covered with the graffiti, and that's gonna be a real challenge, because some of that is moss covered, so it's not like we can simply go and paint over the moss. So we're getting a quote, River Action just taking our own initiative, not making any decisions, but we're getting a quote from a private company on what it would cost to power wash the moss off of that 100-yard stretch, and some of the graffiti would go also, and then painting over the remaining graffiti on a smoother surface. We know there are gonna be costs involved, but we're gonna see what it would be, and then maybe get a grant. We want to use a special kind of almost graffiti-proof paint made by Sherwin-Williams. The stuff costs about $500, about $150 a gallon, and we're gonna need, who knows, probably 30 gallons of this stuff. But River Action will be seeking a donation from Sherwin-Williams, where it appears there are some people in its hierarchy who might be interested in some level of donation for this special place. So that's, the big issue continues to be graffiti, and so what do we do with it? Thinking of fundraising, though, if we need money, we are considering early stages idea of contacting some people who donated to the Thomas Rogers Center back in the 1990s. You saw it a few slides ago. One person on that list is willing to review the list of donors and to identify some potential continuing donors. River Action would be the destination for gifts, because we're a charitable organization, but the money would not go to our general fund, it would go to specifically designated Sylvan Island Fund. Why should we contact the Tom Rogers donors? Of course, they gave specifically for the visitor center, yet we know that they would not want to have a nice-looking visitor center be a good place, but the park itself be less than desirable. So we think that a few might be understanding of certain needs. Now, this idea is at a very, very early stage, and we would take some of your comments. So in the end, the island is in pretty good shape, it's getting a lot of use, but graffiti is a huge problem, which we think needs true cooperation by city and by groups like River Action and the F-O-R-C people, who do so, so much for the island, by the way. None of us want to put in lots of volunteer time covering graffiti and repairing park benches and putting up new signs, only to have them quickly messed up and damaged again. We need a long-term solution. I think it might be a good idea to create a task force, perhaps with one or two from the Parks Department, one from Public Works, one or two of us from River Action, one or two from the F-O-R-C group, and one person from the Police Department, since maybe if putting graffiti on the island becomes a crime in a small way, that they might have suggestions on what they could or could not monitor. And we think that creation, I think, and this is not speaking for Kathy or River Action, but I think it should be done soon, since, as you probably know, the Moline Foundation gives money, such as they gave to us, they're anxious to see that that money is spent and isn't just sitting around waiting for some future date. So that's where they said, let's go to our one last slide and end on a good note. Oh, this is bad, this here, we got everything painted over, and then when I went over on Monday morning, somebody had put this, first time ever in that spot, on these nice stone entryway onto the bridge. This has gotta go, and I told that to the Parks Department, and maybe they, or Public Works, maybe they've been able to get over today to cover that over. And so the next one is the one that ends on a positive note. There is one of those repainted benches and one of the trails that so many people use that make it such a special place. So that's my comments. I don't know, take questions now or later.
Thank you so much, Doctor. I appreciate the update, and it's very informative, and we appreciate all the volunteerism that goes on. We do have a question from the council, and just a reminder, everybody, we have to go into a public hearing here in the next few minutes, so let's see if we can wrap up the questions and go into the hearing. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
You're on mute, Alderman Schoonmaker.
Yes?
Alderman Schoonmaker had a comment, I think.
Okay.
He's just on muting.
There we go. I was having trouble with my mouse. You can hear me now?
Yep.
I can. Hello?
Yep.
Hello? My question really is more for maybe Chief Galt or someone else, but what is the, what's the enforcement if we catch somebody committing a graffiti act, and how do we, how do we go about that? Is it, you know, worth stepping up some kind of, you know, even signage that talks about the graffiti? And I wanna, I should have prefaced that with, I love Sylvan Island, I love what's been done over there, and it's a gem, it attracts a lot of people, and I think we should do something to keep it very nice.
Yeah, Alderman Schoonmaker, of course, I think enforcement certainly would be a viable tool that we could, we could look at. Certainly some challenges with that location being a little bit remote. I just asked Rod Schick if there was any power out on the island, and trying to think of some different things. I think we would be, if there are task forces, something that's great, we'd like to be a part of those conversations, to try and develop some collaborative strategies. Of course, graffiti could be a city, something as simple as a city ordinance.
No.
My, my initial thoughts is probably, you know, our youth population are involved in this, and we do have some other youth programs, like Peer Justice and things, that might be some enforcement tools. I think, as Doctor Moline indicated, the sheer volume of it might be a challenge for us. So I do like the signage, we could explore some solar-powered cameras, maybe, and some different partnerships with them. I think deterrence and ultimately eliminating the problem is our ultimate goal here, but we're happy to be a part of the conversation.
Good.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I'd like to just interrupt the conversation for a moment and take us into our public hearings, so we can stay aligned with what our commitment was for the public hearing. So I'm gonna, we're gonna recess from our regular meeting and go into the public hearing.
Should we, this is Norm again, should we then leave now, or does Kathy have time for a closing statement?
If you don't, if you don't mind, just holding on a minute, and then we'll come back to your presentation, and we'll take that a minute. Thank you.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Marty, are you presenting anything for the public hearing?
No.
Carol, I think is.
Okay, Carol, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me, Your Honor?
I can, thank you. Could you just walk us through the hearing?
Yes. The, yes, if you can hear me, the Illinois State statute requires that the city conduct a public hearing to obtain taxpayer comment prior to the adoption of the budget. And David, you can turn to the next slide. The public hearing notice was published in the Dispatch Rock Island Arches in the newspaper on Tuesday, November 24, 2020, and the budget document is currently available for public inspection on the city's website, as well as in the Finance Office. The next slide. The 2021 budget process began last summer with department heads meeting with their staff to determine budgetary needs. The proposed departmental budgets were then reviewed by the city administrator and finance director, and in October, we presented a balanced budget proposal for council's consideration. The budget work sessions were held during the Committee of the Whole sessions on November 10th and 17th. Next slide, David. And tonight, I'm very pleased to report that the 2021 budget is balanced as presented at $133,471,000. In net of transfers, internal service funds, and the police and fire pensions, the net budget totals $98,965,000. The budget as presented funds all existing city services, and it decreases property taxes $100,000 from last year, and it does not increase any utility fees. The budget also provides funding for 43 vacant positions that we will strategically bring back to council after careful consideration of looking at restructuring alternatives. The next slide. Overall, the budget is comprised of 53 funds that are broken down into three or into nine main categories. The first one is the General Fund, which is the city's main operating fund, and it totals a little bit in excess of $46 million. The next largest category are the four Enterprise Funds that total around $26 million, and all together with all 53 funds, again, the total budget is $133 million. The next slide. When we take a look at the 2020 property tax levies, they are as follows. The fire pension fund is $6.4 million, the levy for the police pension fund, $5.6 million, for the parks fund, $1,078,000, and the public library, $2,661,000, for a total levy of In addition, we've got some levies for our special service areas, number five and six. For number five, the total amount of tax to collect is $132,475, and for special service area number six, $269,255. And the next chart, it's a pie chart, just shows in total how our budget dollars are being spent, and it kind of shows our main categories. And if you take a look at that, the number one thing that the City of Moline spends dollars on is public safety, and that is made up of all of our police and fire, and that makes up 25% of our overall budget. The next category is our internal service fund, followed by all of our business-type Enterprise Funds, that's all of our utility funds, is 13% of the budget, and then capital projects, all the infrastructure throughout the city is about 10% of our overall budget. And then our, almost our last slide here, is where do the dollars come from to pay for all these budget dollars? And the number one category is taxes, and that's not just property taxes, that includes tip increment taxes, sales taxes, liquor taxes. That category, the number one category, makes up 27% of the revenue stream. The next largest revenue stream is all of our charges for services, that's all of our utility fees, our park fees, and it makes up 20% of the budget. And then the third largest category is our intergovernmental revenue, which is all of our federal and state revenues, that can be income tax, replacement taxes, use tax, and that's about 18% of the budget. And with that, Your Honor, the 2021 budget is scheduled for adoption on December 15, 2020, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you or any of the citizens may have.
Thank you, Carol. Do any of the council members have any questions for Carol, for clarification? Hearing none. I have the sheet for the sign-in for public comment in front of me, and there are no people from the public interested in speaking this evening, and I confirmed with Janine that we did not receive any emails of public comment. So with that, I believe our hearing is closed. Thank you, Carol. We are now...
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're now back in our regular session, and Doctor, I turn it back to you.
Yes, again, quickly, this is Norm to wrap up my comment, and we'll be on, and I'll toss it to Kathy regarding the previous gentleman's comment about the scale of the graffiti. Yeah, it's all over, and certainly the task force needs to look at that, but I think in the, in the immediate and short term, until a long-term strategy is worked out, I think we could identify, I've shown you most of the places where it would seem almost, maybe on a weekly basis, I know that Rock Island does this, they have a person at the nearby Sylvan Slough Natural Area, where there's graffiti that can get put there, but somehow a park or Public Works person in Rock Island, one person each week drives by there, and if there's some new stuff, covers it over. And we've learned that by doing that, pretty soon, the graffiti people think there's no point in my doing this, because if I put it up, it's only gonna be there a few days. And if any of you want to see that, drive by the Sylvan Slough Natural Area, the walls that are fairly, just beyond your city of wastewater treatment plant, you'll see, there's a lot of paint that covers it over, but there's no graffiti, and maybe on about five places at Sylvan Island, if somehow they could get a priority, that would be a short-term way to make sure that people who bring families and stuff out there aren't faced with offensive stuff. I'll turn it over to Kathy again. Thanks so much for your attention and your support of Sylvan Island whenever we bring up these concerns. Here's Kathy.
We're in the process of getting all our permits into Moline on all the things that are gonna happen. We're gonna start with Ride and Seek, a month-long in June scavenger hunt. We're going to follow that with the Channel Cat and Riverine Talks. When those start this year, we are going to put a special emphasis on the Mexican-American culture, and especially tie it into the Florisiente neighborhood and Sylvan Island. And to give you an example of that, we're gonna put mariachis on the Channel Cat, and we want to take a walk along from the neighborhood, Florisiente neighborhood, to Sylvan Island to determine with a shivehattery planner what kind of a trail we could have there in the future. That's one of the things that's needed from the neighborhood to Sylvan Island, as well as coming from the neighborhood in Rock Island to Sylvan Island. And then we follow that with Lodzilla, with several of our launches in Moline. We do tune-up for Taming every Thursday night, leading up to Taming on the Slough, and that's at the foot of 17th Street. We have our senior golf cart tour, and always, always, the seniors are so appreciative of the work that goes into the Riverfront Trail and Ben Birdworth Parkway and all of the beauty there when we do our senior golf cart tour. And finally, if we're all vaccinated by then, we're gonna have our conference at the Moline Hotel where we, where is it, Norm? Where's the hotel we do? Can't say the name of it. Yeah, in October. So we're excited about things that are coming up in 2021, and thank you very much for the collaboration. Oh, and Norm talked about the new signage that's gonna go in, this trail signage that is a Corten Steel Fish, and this is an example of it. Can you see this? Do I have it up where you can see it? And it will have each of the seven trails on it, and hopefully, we'll have this coated in something that's graffiti-proof as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the update. Are there any ending questions for our presenters? Well, thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Doctor. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for our hearing in the middle of your presentation. Have a good evening. Are there any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we're just gonna get to it. We have item number one is United Healthcare Policy. Allison Fleming, the Human Resources Manager, will be...
Thank you, Mayor. This is our policy for the Prescription Drug Plan for Medicare-eligible retirees and their dependents. We call it the EGWIP Plan, one of my more favorite acronyms. It's Employer Group Waiver Plan. This is, item is for a one-year renewal with United Healthcare, and staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number two is also being presented by Allison this evening. It's the UMR Agreement.
Thank you. So this is a one-year agreement with UMR. It's a renewal for third-party administrative fees or services, excuse me, for medical prescription drug and dental vision and flexible benefit claims. UMR did offer us a three-year contract, but agreed to a one-year renewal. Per council's direction, you wanted us to research insurance pools, including the IBPC. And so we didn't want to lock into a three-year agreement. We asked them to just do a one-year renewal. So staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
The next three items are being presented this evening by the Parks Recreation Director, Eric Griffith. The first item is Friends of Riverside Lease Agreement. Oh, no, he's not. We've got a substitute tonight.
We have a substitute. Eric's, yes, Eric's grandfather passed away, so he is with his family this week. So I'll be presenting those for him this evening.
Thank you, Rod.
So the first item is the, we are requesting to approve the five-year lease agreement with Friends of Riverside. The lease has been reviewed and updated by Corporation Council, Dirk Price, and approved by the Park Court, and staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. The next item is the Moline Little League Lease Agreement. Rod?
And the exact same thing. This lease was reviewed and updated accordingly by Corporation Council. And the fee structures and everything are the same. This is a similar lease that they've had the last several cycles. And so staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number five is the Quad City Elite Soccer Club Lease Agreement.
And again, this is exact same repeat kind of situation. The Corporation Council has reviewed the lease. Park Court has approved it. Staff would recommend approval of the lease with Soccer Club.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Thank you very much, Rod, for presenting. The next item will be presented by Joe Kuhlbeck, our building official. It's item number six, flashing stop signs at Thirty-Fourth Street and Twelfth Avenue.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. This request was brought to the Traffic Committee by a resident for the intersection of Twelfth Avenue and Thirty-Fourth Street. If you frequent that intersection, and I've seen it myself, there are some cars that either don't recognize the stop signs and blow through it or very quickly yield and accelerate through. But this one was brought to the committee by a resident, and staff looked at it. Putting in traffic signals is not a cost-effective solution here. And it really doesn't warrant it with the amount of traffic and the amount of accidents we have. But staff did feel important that we do our best to notify drivers with as much notice as possible. So we are recommending that we install, these stop signs are flashing. Stop signs are solar-powered, but around the perimeter of the stop sign, they flash a beacon just to kind of bring more attention to the sign itself. The proposal we got is for eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixteen dollars to install four signs at each intersection on each direction. And staff is looking for approval for this request.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Moyer, sorry.
I'm over here today.
You are.
So I'm just curious, didn't we install flashing lights at Twelfth and Twelfth, I think? And do we know, did that actually reduce the number of accidents? Or do we have any data that shows that this actually does reduce accidents?
I don't know. I don't have any data at that intersection in particular. All we can do, I think, I mean, we can go back and definitely check and pull reports. Police is able to get those pretty quickly. But without putting in a light at intersection, bringing as much attention to the stop signs is a step in the right direction. Now, we had lighted beacons here at this intersection at one point, but the replacement cost on them, it wasn't feasible. And they were taken down several years ago. But yeah, these do help with notifying travelers and motorists that the stop signs are there, especially if they're not familiar with the intersection. But I don't have any hard data for you right now, especially with that specific intersection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Potter.
Yes, I know you said there was, I believe, the data said there was twenty-one accidents in the last five years. Do we have a breakdown of what it's been in like the last year or two?
I don't have that information specifically either, Alderman Potter. I know this request came in six months prior, and it was denied at the time because there wasn't much evidence to support it. The request was brought back by the same citizen, and we pulled the date at that point. And we had averaged about one accident per month in that timeframe. And it was at that time when the Traffic Committee agreed and agreed with this and came up with this solution.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Thank you very much, Joe, for your presentation. The next two items will be presented by Rod Schick, the Municipal Services General Manager. The first item is the Republic Services Landfill Agreement.
So at the end of the year, our landfill contracts will expire. And we collaborated with Rock Island and Myland and issued an RFP. The RFP was reviewed by Corporation Council, Dirk Price, and approved there. And it was actually issued by Rock Island. And so we received two responses to the proposal, one from Republic for the Upper Rock Island County landfill and one from Millennium Waste, the Lower Rock Island County landfill. And for the municipal waste, our regular waste, Republic Services provided the most responsive and favorable proposal. And the staff would recommend approval of the contract with Republic Services.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Are there any questions or comments? Alderman Waldron.
Rod, what was the jump from our current year to 2021?
We were paying currently, our current rate right now is seventeen dollars and forty-three cents a ton. So going into this next, with this contract, we'll see a savings of over thirty thousand dollars.
I thought so. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. The next item to be discussed is item number eight on the agenda. It's Millennium Waste Landfill Agreement. Rod?
And so on this portion of the same request for proposals, Millennium Waste submitted the most responsive and best proposal for our sludge and yard waste disposal. And that also is a savings over previous. This current year, we're paying thirteen dollars and sixty-five cents per ton, and we'll be at twelve eighty starting into this contract. And staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Thank you, Rod. The next two items will be presented by Dirk Price, Corporation Council. Item number nine, transfer of Twelve-Twelve Fourteenth Avenue to Moline Community Development Corporation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a continuation of the program that's been going on for the last year and a half, where we've partnered with NCDC to take properties we've acquired either through tax sale or through foreclosure of liens that we have. And we transfer them to NCDC. They go out and solicit the proposals for people to rehab them, and successfully so. They then either are occupied by the rehabber or sold to families who need them at terrific value for all concerned. So this is the next one in the line. And with your approval, we'll prepare the agreements and get NCDC out there soliciting proposals.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Are there any comments or questions regarding this? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number ten is the Kimball Complete Care Contract. Dirk?
Unfortunately, named a little bit there. The, I'm pinch-hitting for Brad Hauman on this one, reviewed the contract. This is our newest abatement contractor. They do the lawn cutting primarily and also the board-up. The one thing we had to change from years past is IDOL has now confirmed that the board-up services are subject to prevailing wage acts. We added that into the contract, recovered there. Other than that, it's, this has been a wholly reliable contractor. Brad could not be more pleased with their work. And their pricing is good. And Brad is also pleased with that. So staff's recommending approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any question or discussion regarding this item? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dirk. The next item will be presented by Marty Vonix, our interim city administrator. It is item number eleven, Extension of the City Hall Closure.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Several weeks ago, the City Council directed staff to close City Hall to the public to comply with the governor's orders and the Tier Three mandates. As you know, the COVID has spiked here, Quad Cities and the Midwest in general. So we are recommending that the city continue to keep City Hall and Finance Department, which is located in Central Station, closed to the public. We are continuing to provide city services, though. As you enter the City Hall, you saw the signs with the phone numbers. City Clerk is here, I'm here. Anybody can get services from the city if they call that number, and we will work with them. So in addition, all the workers that can work from home are currently working from home. And so, and Public Works has reinstituted all the safety precautions that they had initially back in March when we went into shutdown or closed down. So I would ask the City Council to go ahead and continue keeping City Hall closed until further notice or until that order is lifted.
Okay. So I think that we had defined it as like a two-week closure.
Yes.
And so now we're just revisiting that.
Yes. Does that, there doesn't seem to be a let-up, obviously.
No, not yet. No, I would agree.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Alderman Waldron. We have a second from Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion or concern about this item?
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes.
Could we just also include in the language that that's the Finance Office as well?
Oh, I did say that, yeah.
Did you? I didn't know if it was in the motion. Okay. Thank you, Marty.
Roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker. Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Thank you.
That motion carries. Thank you, Marty. The next item will be presented by Carol Barnes, our Finance Director. It's item number twelve, the 2021 Property Tax Abatement.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Staff seeks approval from City Council requesting the county clerk not to extend the 2021 property taxes for payment of all principal and interest on the City of Moline's general obligation corporate bonds. For 2021, the city expects to receive sufficient revenue from other sources to pay all principal and interest payments on the city's general obligation bonds. And therefore, no additional property taxes are requested for the purpose of bond payment. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Schoemaker moved to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, who, who made the motion to?
Schoemaker. Kevin.
Oh, it's Kevin. Alderman Schoemaker made the motion and we had a second from Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Carol. Uh, we have no other. Thank you. We have no other this evening, so we're going to move into our informationals. And the first information will be presented by Carol Barnes. It's the proposed final amendment to the twenty twenty budget.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am very pleased to be presenting the final budget amendments for twenty twenty. As you know, a tremendous amount of work went into managing the twenty twenty budget by the council, all of the department heads and staff throughout all levels of the city. And it was all in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic, which resulted in significant revenue shortfalls for the city. And now, nine months later, we started way back in March, nine months later, I come before you and I am very pleased to report that we project to end the year with all of our fifty-three funds balanced within our new fund balance policy that council adopted this last fall. As part of that, the general fund will be ending the year one point three million dollars in the black with estimated reserves in excess of thirteen million and thirty-one point four percent of net fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures. And that equals about a hundred and thirteen days. So I'm really, really pleased to be, um, sharing that information. And David, if you can put up the summary for our amendments. I would like to just go through it very briefly. And this schedule here, I'm hoping that you can also call it up on your, on your, um, laptops, because I see that it's kind of hard to see. But this summary shows the proposed final amended budget. And if you look at the far right-hand side, revenues across all of our funds excluding pensions decreased by almost seven point five million dollars this year or about six point seven eight percent. And if you recall, back in April, we had projected potential revenue losses that could have approached eight to ten million dollars. So we're very thankful that it was in the seven and a half million dollar range instead. And in an effort to offset those revenue losses, staff, the council, everybody citywide worked very hard to decrease those expenditures. And we were able to come up with about six point five million dollars in cuts or about five and a half percent. However, that did leave us with about a million dollar shortfall. And fortunately, um, we were able to make up that one million dollar shortfall using our excess reserves in accordance with our new fund balance policy. And David, if you go to the next slide, again, this one has a lot of detail, so I'm just going to look at the really broad highlights. But this breaks down all the reductions in revenues as well as all the expenditure cuts. And I'm going to start with the revenues. Again, we talked about that we had shortfalls of about seven and a half million highlighted there in blue. And the largest reduction in those were from taxes. And again, it's not property taxes, but utility taxes, home rule sales tax, food and liquor tax, hotel motel tax. All these revenue sources that we, I think we met weekly throughout, pretty much weekly throughout that entire month, uh, nine-month period with updates on these revenue sources. In addition, we did have some reductions in our TIF property tax taxes that were the result of, um, abated taxes in the TIFs. And we had some losses in our licenses and permits as well as in our charges for services of about three point six million. So if you take a look through those, that is the, the largest portion of the reductions. Fortunately, we do anticipate here by the end of the year through some accruals that we should be receiving about one and a half million dollars for reimbursement from cures. And in addition, you know that we've already received our first round of a grant for our C D B G COVID. And we also, this last year, received nine hundred and fifty-five thousand in rebuild Illinois funds for capital projects. So with those additional revenues, that brings our net reductions in revenues down to about four and a half million dollars or four point ten percent highlighted in yellow. On the expenditure side, I mentioned a few minutes ago that we were able to cut about six and a half million dollars. A couple of the largest buckets of those were in salaries and benefits. As you recall, throughout the year, we had thirty-five vacant positions come open and we froze those positions here till the end of the year. We also offered an early retirement program and we had eight people take advantage of that program. We did freeze raises for our non-union employees and we were able to save some, uh, money when reduced overtime and health insurance on those vacant positions. The next largest category is all of our operating expenditures, and this is across the board, everywhere and every department. We were able to save about five point nine million dollars. And I'll let you just kind of read through that. We had some changes in capital expenditures. We deferred vehicle purchases. We deferred some park projects. We were able to add in a couple of, uh, capital projects that our engineers had recommended. But those are the changes in capital. In debt service, we were able to pay down principal of about three hundred thousand on one of our loans from First Midwest Bank, so that was an increase. But the net change is a reduction of six and a half million dollars. And again, on the expenditure side, in response to COVID, we did have to increase some of our expenditures in order to get through the pandemic. And I've kind of highlighted the main buckets that we are going to be applying for reimbursement through cures. We had some increased legal fees, restroom sanitation, sanitization in parks, disinfectant, hand sanitizer, gloves, masks, all those types of things, plexiglass there in the council chambers. Um, we're also working on touchless water drinking fountains, um, as well as some of the touchless toilets. We are also, um, we, council had approved some contracts for tree debris pickup and contracts for leaf collection and snow removal as a result of COVID and some of our staff being out of the office. We contracted that and it will be approved through cures reimbursement. Council also approved a new police mobile, uh, trailer for a hundred and seven thousand dollars, almost a hundred and eight. The council also added library programs to help offset some of the school closures and programming there. Council also authorized an emergency procurement program that gave out almost three hundred thousand dollars in five thousand dollar increments to our local businesses. And then lastly, we have the COVID C D B G grant, round one, which includes all of the digital equity rental and food assistance for four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. That revenue is just shy of two million dollars and with that, it nets our decrease in expenditures down to about four and a half million dollars. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and, um, I would like to say that on, uh, December fifteenth, we will have a resolution for council's consideration of approval.
Do any of the aldermen have any comments or questions for Carol? Alderman Went.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, and, and Carol, I apologize because we, you and I talked about, uh, this earlier today and, uh, I had a quick glance through. Uh, but, uh, I've got, I guess I've got two comments. One is, uh, I did notice that, uh, on your page two, uh, you had the rebuild Illinois, a capital project grant. That's the nine hundred and fifty-five thousand that we've already collected. But, and, and you know, you note that it is a budgeted expenditure, expenditure for twenty twenty. Um, but down below, when you have the additional expenditures, if we would add that in, because th- those funds we cannot use for anything other than for capital, uh, improvements. Um, that if we added, I just want to make sure I get these numbers right. If we add that, uh, to this, uh, additional expenditures of the, uh, one point nine six five, uh, million, we would actually be, uh, eclipse, um, our, uh, additional revenue for, for this year. Is that correct?
Yes, I think I'm following what you're saying.
Okay.
But yes, I, yes.
I, 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 I just don't want anybody to, to look at this and go, oh, well, they wound up with an extra million dollars of, uh, uh, income this year that they didn't spend, that, that we actually spent more than in additional revenue with additional expenditures that we had to, to, to take on. Um, so that, that was, that was one thing. And then the other, I just want to, to, to make sure that it's, uh, just recap and, and you did a great job that when we started this thing out, we thought we were going to be between eight and ten million bucks, uh, in the hole. A- as you guys kept us surprised, we wound up only being seven and a half million in the hole. But while we were trying to match, uh, the loss of revenue, um, we wound up actually only cutting expenditures by six and a half million, which actually resulted in us having a budget deficit of a million dollars for twenty twenty. But the good thing is, we had sufficient money in our reserves per our, uh, new reserve policy that we could make up that million dollar deficit by paying that out of our, our reserves. Is that, that a fair, uh, presentation of, uh, uh, or a summary of, of what you're presenting?
Yes, it is. Absolutely, Mike.
All right. Well, uh, with that, I, I just want to thank you, your staff, the, uh, uh, the finance department for really helping us, guide us through this whole process. Uh, while we wound up not being down as much as, uh, we had feared at the beginning, um, we also, through your guidance, we didn't cut, uh, things, uh, deeper than we, than we needed to. And that, uh, I think it, uh, turned out that, uh, we, uh, kind of worked right in that, uh, that middle ground that we were able to be, uh, responsible for, uh, the budget, uh, adjustments to match, uh, what our revenue reductions are while taking into consideration what excess money we had in our reserve funds, uh, vis- vis our new, uh, um, uh, uh, fund policies. So thank you very much for you and your staff.
Thank you, Alderman Went.
Thank you.
Alderman Parker.
Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to echo Mike's, um, uh, thanks to the staff and, and really, uh, Carol and, and Marty, your staff and everyone in the city for everything you did to pitch in. But really, I'd like to thank the residents who by and large, um, understood what we're going through. It's as being, I didn't get some calls, several calls over the last six months with various complaints, but when we explained the situation to them, um, they've been very understanding that, you know, this is a strange time that we're going through and we're all, um, going to have to understand, um, how to get through that. And so, um, thanks to the staff, absolutely. Really thanks to all the residents who've been, um, by and large, very understanding and supportive. And as a result, um, you know, your taxes are, your property taxes are going to, uh, um, generally speaking, uh, stay flat, go down a little bit. So thank you all very much and hopefully we'll have a wonderful twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Alderman Potter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, Carol, uh, I, I want to echo those comments in terms of, uh, want to appreciate everything that the staff did for, uh, to bring this, uh, uh, budget to us and, and in, in a very difficult time. Um, my question is, is that w- with our new fund policies, uh, um, we're obviously not going to be able to find little pockets of, uh, of additional revenue, um, should we see, uh, a continuation of, uh, a downward trend in, in, in the market and in the economy that, uh, uh, you know, may happen as a result of COVID. Let's hope not, given that we have a vaccine. Things look to be brightening, but I guess my, my question is, is that, um, do we have any idea, um, what, uh, um, what magic tricks we're going to try and pull up this year to try and, uh, keep things on an even keel?
Thank you, Alderman Potter. Uh, the main thing that I would recommend is that we stay the course on being very, very conservative. We were very fortunate here that we have a significant amount of open positions that although it has been difficult, we are getting by, um, and able to, you know, being able to continue city services. So as we begin and start trying to fill those over the course of the next few months, I think we need to be slow and very thoughtful during that process and trying to restructure and reorganize in any way that we can, um, in order to save dollars. And in addition, you know, we need to kind of hang on to some of those fund balances. We're really fortunate here that we ended the year one point three million dollars in the black. So that does give us a little bit of cushion, um, going into twenty twenty. We've positioned ourselves well, but I think we just need to stay the course and be very, very conservative with your guidance.
Are there any other comments or questions? Marty, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate what, uh, Carol said about the, uh, hire backs. The budget that we created in two thousand twenty-one really is predicated on the fact that, um, you know, we were general, we're going to have the same revenues. We, we, as much as we would love to be fully staffed, we have to be careful and slow and deliberate and strategic in, in hiring people back. I know, for example, um, Tony Lodi in, in utilities has been very careful and thoughtful about how he wants to hire people back and, and staff his staff. So I think that's, that's the lesson I think that we need to, um, uh, replicate throughout the, the city. So that would, I echo what Carol says. That's what we looked at and that's what we designed when we put this budget together.
Thank you, Marty.
Mm-hmm.
Um, without any other comments regarding that, thank you very much, Carol. I appreciate it and I'll look forward to the resolution next time. Um, we'll now turn to the administrators' update. Marty?
I have nothing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, do we have any public comments this evening? Hearing none?
No.
We are going to close out of our committee of the whole and go into our council agenda. Um, I'd like to call the council meeting to order. We're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance and we will not have an invocation this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Went.
Present, sorry.
Potter.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
Schoemaker.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Berg.
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of December first, two thousand twenty. Second reading ordinances. Council bill thirty forty dash twenty twenty, ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline, Illinois. Special service area five of the city of Moline, Illinois. Council bill thirty forty-one dash twenty twenty, ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the city of Moline, Illinois. Special service area number six of the city of Moline, Illinois. Resolutions. Council bill eleven twenty-nine dash twenty twenty, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an independent contractor's agreement with River City, City's engineering for south slope controls improvements for the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Council bill eleven thirty dash twenty twenty, resolution authorizing approval of, of a request for a streetlight at the intersection of Forty-Eighth Avenue and Thirty-Fourth Street, Moline. Council bill eleven thirty-one dash twenty twenty, resolution setting the annual meeting schedule for twenty twenty-one and authorizing the city staff to do all things necessary to notify the media of the twenty twenty-one annual meetings schedule. Council bill eleven thirty-two dash twenty twenty, a resolution electing to include employee contributions directed into a retirement health savings plan as earnings reportable to Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund effective January first, two thousand twenty-one and authorizing the city clerk to file a duly certified copy of this resolution with I M R F. Council bill eleven thirty-three dash twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an amendment to the current agreement with International City Management Association Retirement, a corporation to include changes to our retiree health insurance benefits implemented for non-union F O P, I A F F and U A W employees hired on or after January first, twenty twenty. Council bill eleven thirty-four dash twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a policy with United Healthcare B P to provide reinsurance coverage for medical and prescription drug benefit claims for a one-year period commencing January first, two thousand twenty-one and authorizing the human resources manager to execute any and all documents necessary to bind and accept reinsurance coverage with United Healthcare B P for medical and prescri- prescription drug benefit claims for a one-year period commencing January first, two thousand twenty-one. Council bill eleven thirty-five dash twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a law enforcement services agreement between the city of Moline and Universal Protection Service LLC, doing business as Allied Universal Security Services, setting forth the terms for assignment of uniformed police officers to the South Park Mall complex for the period January first, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Council bill eleven thirty-six dash twenty twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to professional services agreement with H R Green Incorporated for a water system risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plant professional engineering service agreement for the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council bill thirty thirty-nine dash twenty twenty, ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the city of Moline, Illinois for the tax levy year twenty twenty, collectible in the year twenty twenty-one, and enacting an ordinance relating to the same subject matter.
Motion to approve thirty thirty-nine twenty twenty. Parker.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Potter.
Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoenmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays. That motion carries. First reading ordinances. Council Bill 3042-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10, Parking Prohibited at Any Time by Including 14th Street on the East Side from 30 Feet North of 20th Avenue and 14th Street on the East Side from 30 Feet South of 20th Avenue. Council Bill 3043-2020, an ordinance making appropriations for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021. Council Bill 3044-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 6 Rights of Way and Public Property Uses of the Moline Code of Ordinances to modify the regulations for facilities located in the public right of way and on public property. Council Bill 4008-2020, a special ordinance requesting that the county clerk not exceed 2021 taxes, I'm sorry, extend 2021 taxes for payment of principal and interest for the bond series noted. And that's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you, Janine, appreciate it. And we'll now turn to the council's miscellaneous business, and I will move around the normal council sequence. So Alderman Williams, do you have anything for the council this evening?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker.
I have a couple of things, Your Honor. First of all, I would like to wish a very happy birthday to my person to my right, specifically, Mike Went. Hope you had a great day. Secondly, I don't know if this is to KJ, or to Marty, or to who it is, but where are we on the CARES Act money regarding the purchase of the laptops for the kids at the Moline Public School System, the digital equity, and the rent payments? I know that the rent is, the moratorium ends on December 31st at this point, and so there's going to be some real questions, I'm sure, coming up on that. So if somebody could help us understand where we are in that process. Thanks.
KJ's on the call, Dirk. KJ?
Hi, good evening, everyone. As far as the rent payments, we have reactivated the program with the Salvation Army. That's already, maybe about two weeks ago, so we're steadily making rent payments right now, and helping out with gas and electric bills. As far as the laptops, I think we've authorized about 36 of them to be passed out to Head Start students and seniors, and then we're working with David in IT. He's ordered hotspots, and hopefully those will be here, if not this week, next week, where we can pass those out to the seniors and Head Start kids.
Can I have a follow-up?
Certainly, Alderman Parker.
So I think it was not just the Head Start kids for digital equity, but wasn't it anybody in the school system that applied for it, that met certain criteria?
You are correct, Alderman Parker, excuse me there. With the school district, we're using MediaCom, so we pass a list on to MediaCom, and they go out and do the installs.
So you don't have, do you have a sense of the percentage of installations that have taken place? Just, you know, I know that we're moving through the school year, and they're going to be on break here pretty soon. I'm just, was hoping that it would be, you know, maybe it is, well along the way, hopefully it is.
Well, I know we're very active with it. Dirk, do you remember what number we're at? If not, I can text and get that information real quickly. Tara's also on the call, but she's only on audio.
Yeah, Tara might have the latest number. I'm trying to find the spreadsheet, but Tara might know offhand.
Okay, give me a minute, I'm gonna take a minute off and try to text her real quick.
Thank you. I can tell you this, that we've got a list of about 105, 106 people, Alderman Parker, and MediaCom's been making their way through it, and I think they're close to 70 installs, 75. So we've gotten quite a few people hooked up. We just have a few more to go in terms of the applications, and then, as you just suggested, we'll probably get a different round of people requesting in semester two, so. But we've made some progress with them getting people hooked up.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Alderman Went, the birthday person.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the birthday wishes, and I just want to say thank you very much, and again, thank staff for everything that they've been doing through all of this process. I know that it's not been an easy year, I know the next few months are still going to be pretty tough, but there is a light at the end of the tunnel for our staff, for our residents, and I think we're going to wind up coming out on the other end stronger. So thanks, everybody, for their hard work through this whole process. Thanks for your sacrifice and understanding as we have worked through this difficult time, and will continue to, over this winter and into the spring, as we come out, we'll be in a much better place. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Alderman Went. Alderman Potter.
Yes, Your Honor. Sad news this week for the entire quad cities on the passing of Joe Taylor, longtime head of the Convention and Visitors Bureau in the area, and he was a great advocate for all of us, and I'm deeply saddened that his passing, but happy in that we spent many years under the tutelage of him improving visitor relations throughout the entire nation. Sorry, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. Alderman Moyer.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Schoenmaker. Sorry, I'm forgetting my, it's been so long since I've seen everybody's faces.
Move this around.
Alderman Schoenmaker.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron. Thank you. Alderman Berg.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, and I want to give my warmest happy birthday wishes to you, Alderman Went. Thank you so much for carving out part of your special day to be with us. And I also want to thank, I know that we have a couple of hiccups with the remote logging in, but I want to thank the council's patience with technology and continuing to participate and represent our community, so thank you very much for that. And now I'd like to turn it to staff. Does anybody on staff have anything they'd like to share with the council this evening? Yes, Rod.
Just a quick update, our leaf collection season has been pretty phenomenal. It's extraordinary weather, we've never experienced anything like this in my 20 years here. Every year previous to this year has been interrupted by weather, whether that was snow, rain, ice, or something else. We are on track to wrap up our leaf collection, hopefully on Thursday. Miller Trucking and Excavating should be wrapped up tomorrow, and then we're hoping to kind of do kind of some final sweeping on Thursday, and if necessary, also on Friday. But just wanted to give you that update, that's where we're looking, which is, puts us right on our target for this Friday to be wrapped up.
Thank you very much for that update.
Thank you.
And then, just to clarify, if there was a yard that was missed, the homeowners have an opportunity to reach out to you and connect with you and try to get that one care.
As always, yes, we'll continue to try to get out as much as we can to get those last-minute putouts and misses collected.
Thank you so much. Is there anything else from staff? We do not have anyone from the public here. I'm assuming we don't have any public comment. Hearing none? Do we have anything else? Alderman Waldron.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene in executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, 5 ILCS 120/2C11, collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 122C2, appointment, employment, retention, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 122C1.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please. Alderman Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoenmaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. We'll now close out of open session and go into executive session. Please clear the chambers.